All right.
Full house?
Full house, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, well, welcome, welcome everybody to the city council work session. Chair Trubaker will be joining us shortly, but we'll go ahead and get get things started and it looks like we have everybody here and like I said, Chair Trubaker will be here shortly. So to begin, we'll go ahead and review the agenda for the city council meeting at six P M. After the opening ceremony, pledge of allegiance, moment of silence and acknowledgements will move on to our public hearing. For the proposed street vacation of River Drive east of Washington Boulevard. And Joe Simpson will be presenting that for us. And then we will move on to the reports from planning commission, also Joe with the proposed rezone of seventeen twenty eighteen thirty four Washington Boulevard. And then the last item on the agenda prior to public comment is the unfinished business now.
Yeah, I just wanted to to bring up that we still. I sort of jumped the gun yesterday and there's still some is some concerns about how to deal with this issue of the height limitations in this framework plan. And so we would just ask that you do a motion to extend this. We're not sure how it will get resolved, but we're working on sort of the bigger issue that this presents when with when there's recommendations in these in these plans and how they interact with existing ordinance and general plan. So that would be the staff's recommendation. I don't know, Glenn, if you have any other thing else to say.
No, just if there are any questions, we can answer those. But yeah, at this point, I think just an extension would be good and that way we can get everything figured out before we bring it back.
Okay, so so possibly some discussion if necessary, and if not, then extend to what date I'm sorry, or do we have us just extend? We don't need it.
I do have a question about them, so. So will Brandon or anybody get up to talk about the?
I guess that's up to you. Well, I think we could just they could explain that that would be their recommendation as well, if that helps you.
If that's helpful, I mean, we had talked about in leadership, just having like a little update about how it's a little bit confusing and what exactly is going on. I think that would be helpful. So I know we got a lot of feedback about it in the last meeting, so people just kind of understood a little bit of what we were thinking about that would be helpful. Otherwise, we might get those one off questions and then it'd be better to hear it all at once.
Yeah, I think that's.
If you want, are you okay with that?
Okay. All right. So that is the agenda. Any, I guess, any questions or comments or discussion on the agenda? Then this is me passing the baton to. Into the work session here.
Awesome. All right, well, it looks like Barton, you're up to talk with us about the proposed text amendment for use and development standards in the M one and M two zones. This is kind of continuation from our conversation the last time. Oh, I don't know if I brought my spreadsheet with me. That was a great spreadsheet. Whoever Glenn is, I lost you. Thank you. Well, yeah, I said, are you gonna send it out? Because I know Marshall will want to sort that thing. Yeah.
All right, go. Good afternoon. So this is a continuation of our work session from last time on the proposed M one and M two standards. And I think I have two goals for this work session. One is we want you to understand the proposal and most importantly, why these things are being proposed. And then second, at the previous work session, it there didn't appear to be unanimity on opinions on some of these things. And so we would like to be able to take it to you on your regular session. And if there's something that maybe you support everything, but there's this one section or two sections that we can craft that in a way that you could maybe take a separate vote on that one or two sections so that we can so that you can make progress on considering it. So so I'll be asking questions like, you know, do you want this broken out so that you can vote on it separately? So I want to start with and the big picture of the why. Which I touched on a little bit in the work session, but I want to do a little bit more. This some information on the status of industrial land development in this is Weaver and Davis counties. And you can see how it has grown so much in the last decade, the the dark blue lines. Are the industrial construction over the decade, and you can see how much that has grown. And consequently, the vacancy. How much the vacancy has gone down? So vacancy is a good indicator of a need that isn't being met and that we can anticipate more construction. E D C Utah attracts tries to attack businesses, the state and of all different kinds and most of their projects that they see are manufacturing type projects that are looking to come to the state. And this just shows the job growth in the M S A over the last five years, how manufacturing has just really outpaced growth in from other sectors.
Have we seen that trend also? Are we just?
Yes.
Going along with what the state says is happening statewide?
Well, this is the Ogden Clearfield M S A.
Sorry.
And if you zoom that down from Ogden Clearfield to Ogden, we are a big chunk of that. We are definitely seeing a lot of that growth. And this really shows you, we have the B D O over the last four or five years. Four years ago, we had four hundred acres available. Today, we've got like eighty seven. So you can see how much are of that land has been used. And it also reflects that, you know, we're starting to run out of supply. And there are plans on the horizon. This is Weaver County has a plan west Weaver to create new industrial park, which is which would provide a lot of land, but it also doesn't have sewer, doesn't have water, doesn't have services. Isn't, you know, in proximity to anything else. So this will be a great thing for our grandkids, but it's something that's just going to take time.
Barton, can I ask a question?
Yes.
The the pressure that Ogden has to to have some of these uses that we particularly think are are helpful. Are these uses that can't be supplied in surrounding communities?
Most of them can be supplied, yes. I, you know, we've talked about like personal storage. I noticed that North Ogden just passed an amendment to allow more personal storage units there. So, yeah, and there are there are lands available in surrounding communities that could accommodate many of these uses, so.
So what was their original ordinance that didn't allow them?
It was didn't say like they just couldn't build. You know, it's just particular zone they.
So they've increased the zones where it can be built. Okay, I was just curious how that change happened.
Yeah, I mean, there's there are like lands for junk salvage yards in other communities. A lot of communities are are fairly restrictive on those use, but there there are lands other places for them.
Yeah, well, that's just in just going to share my thoughts that a little bit is. You know, Ogden, where we do have a a, you know, pretty built out, we don't have a ton of extra land. And but there is a lot of open space. You know, in the county and surrounding communities, I I think we kind of need to start looking maybe a little broader to what we supply versus what and where it could go. I mean, I don't think we need to just build a little brick wall around our border.
Right, yeah.
That so anyway, that's why I asked that question. And so thank you.
Yeah, yeah. None of these are we saying, you know, not in my backyard. And some of them were saying our backyard is full. We've accommodated enough and so. And looking again at the focus on manufacturing jobs. This is just kind of the annual wage for a manufacturing job versus other jobs is significantly higher. This is just looking at the economic impacts of manufacturing. And this is interesting one. This is for the state of Utah, but if you look at for every direct job, just how much other employment indirect and induced you get from? You get employees there. Well, you also have suppliers. You also have restaurants where they stay. The hotels where the people come in for conferences, you have the home builders that build homes for people to live in and on and on. So each manufacturing job has a pretty significant spin off and other employment and other earnings. And then the gross domestic product. So that's a big reason why we have economic development folks that really try hard to bring in manufacturing jobs and aren't trying to bring in, you know, restaurants, retails, or things like that. Not those aren't great, but that's that's why we put so much focus on that. So this is the job multiplier for just jobs in the in the M S A in this area for each manufacturing job. It creates point nine two jobs in other sectors in this M S A and it's like two point nine, if you look at the state and three point five, if you look at the country, so. And this is why we have focused on very specific industries aerospace and defense, outdoor products, life science, advanced manufacturing and material. That's materials and manufacturing, you know, these are the high paying jobs. They have a lot of spin off benefits for the community. They bring a lot of economic development to the community. That's really the core of what we try to attract. So I brought this as an example. This is just a random M one, M two zone property. It is close to another one where we actually had some a proposal. We had a proposal. Again, not on this one, but on nearby one. Someone wanted to come in and do a junk and salvage yard there. And we said you can't. It's a pending ordinance. You got to wait till the this is resolved. And then they went away and another one came in and said, hey, I want to do a manufacturing operation on that site. And so that really piqued our interest. So I just did some comparison of what the effects would be. So if this was an auto salvage yard lot, you would get property tax. You would get sales tax because every time you're selling a part from around the bill, that's a something that you can sell that you have to pay sales tax on. And, you know, a lot like that might get four or five employees. So there's some economic benefit to that. There are the environmental issues. This is traditionally, a lot of these have been along the river and just kind of remind you know, what we went through along the river with these uses in the past, so. So not saying that those are in our future, but it's it's a concern. If the site was developed as personal storage, you get more property taxes, there's more building there, you get some sales tax, not from rentals. As I understand, but you know, if they sell boxes or tape or stuff like that, you get a little bit of sales tax. Facility that size probably have about three employees. So there are some benefits to that.
Well, I just want to make sure my assumptions correct. You twenty seven thousand dollars is what Ogden City would get, not the whole county, right?
Right, yeah. But the sales tax is what the whole state would get, and we don't want to get a chunk of that. And then did look at just what we have personal storage. There are fifteen facilities in Ogden. We appear to have what the market would require per capita for that. I did contact five of these and just see, you know, do you have space available? All five had a lot of units available, including ground floor units for your your snowmobiles or whatever things you have, so. So we appear to be pretty well supplied with those, so. But the third option, you know, if this was developed as manufacturing, we get property tax. Sales tax is really complicated depending on point of sale and things like that. Some industries we might get a lot, someone might get any. But the real thing is, you know, a facility that size might employ fifty plus those indirect jobs. Plus, you know, how it can, you know, based on that state averages, something like fifteen million to the state's gross domestic product, so. So this is really why we're focusing on keeping what a limited supply of manufacturing land we have to these higher value uses. So I guess one question for you, the proposed ordinance would prohibit new junk and salvage yards. So you could continue your existing one, continue operating and providing that service. But just if you wanted to open a new one, you wouldn't be able to. Really, the reasons are low employment, low property value, the potential for environmental issues. So and a question for you, is this something you want broken out as separate or separate way so that you can vote on that separate from everything else?
Let's see, one had none, but also I appreciate the way you've broken this down. And I was wondering too, I think there was some conversation about kind of looking at the map and like determining if there are areas where we might allow more things and where we wouldn't within all of those. Because the M one M two is pretty big and broad.
Okay.
But I don't know, you know, that's kind of what I heard a little bit was that people might want to segregate some of those areas. So it's just not all of M one or all of M two. That I heard a little bit of that before. Okay.
Okay.
I don't know how how that looks exactly, but.
So Barton, if if this were to pass, we would still have junkyard or salvage yards and and would would this put a cap on those? By would it? I mean, because so if somebody oh, yeah, that's my question. This would put a cap on that that number.
Just the ones that exist now would be able to exist.
Even if they.
Right, yeah.
Okay.
But if but if they close down business, then it couldn't be reopened. Yes, it would need to be a continuous business.
Yep.
Otherwise.
I was just saying that someone said refresh my memory about what all this means.
I just wanted to make sure.
And I'm not arguing for against the specific one. I'm just saying I thought maybe some people wanted to see a little bit more of a variety.
This is the one part of it that I did have concerns with that I probably would support this part.
Pulling that out.
Yeah. The next one was the personal storage. One and and the proposal would limit new personal storage units. So one provision would be if you have an existing one like downtown, you wanted to buy that facility, wipe it out and then put actually said twice as much in an industrial area, we would do that as a an incentive to get rid of the ones downtown. Or if you got an existing one, you want to do a little bit of infill. Or if you want to do upper floor. Or if we just grow a lot and we need more, there's a provision that we could based on population growth, but other than that proposal would limit them based on them having very low employment, modest land value, and really that the land would be better suited for, you know, these manufacturing jobs and higher paying jobs, so.
On your little three examples, a couple of slides back. Do you did? Is there enough data to to see exactly what kind? I mean, if if we were to move forward with this other plan for personal storage with only on the second floor? Do we know what that kind of like what that kind of what that generates and what?
That's a great question because I'm kind of supportive of that. Yeah, but I don't know what the difference is.
Yeah, I haven't run that. But I can provide that.
Okay.
I mean, it would provide still some opportunities for for new storage units. So.
Yeah.
Yeah, I could.
Yeah.
Right, because they can still do it.
I mean, because I agree, I think, I think, I mean, I understand the allure of personal storage, right? You own it, it's repetitive. People just, once you get it, you kind of keep getting it because people don't want to clean up their store.
You have the fun of opening it when people don't pay for theirs and see what's in there.
So I I understand that, but I do, I mean, in my own opinion, it just feels like it's it's moving into a new direction, right? We see those taller buildings that that kind of do that, or or this new way that you propose where you like something on the bottom floor and then stores on the top. Like, I I understand. I I I agree. I think that's I think I think the whole personal storage is moving towards something new. So I I I I support where we're going.
Yeah, I can provide some additional.
I was just curious what what that looked like.
Another question?
So at at this point, we were only looking at at land that isn't developed. What what about the M one M two land that is developed already? Can a can somebody out in B D O decide they wanted to be a storage unit or something like that?
Well, B D O is a separate zoning, so no.
Oh, another M one.
But but another M one. Yeah, if if somebody has a developed site and they they want to come in and.
Ogden Business Exchange. How about down there? How about any of those? That's an M one M two, right?
It's actually its own zone, too, so.
It's zone two, though, right?
It's it's a zone. Got its own special. Yeah, yeah, we have about seven zone manufacturing zones, each kind of looking at different ones, but but anyway, if there are some things out there, some contractors have a yard, maybe it's just a storage yard, they do their equipment there and they they go, let me sell this. And then new buyer comes in and wants to do you know, junk or salvage or or personal storage. This would say, no, you couldn't make that conversion.
But right now they can't.
Yeah, good.
Not with a pending ordinance.
Yes, right. Yes.
Demonstrating that I understand the situation.
Yes, thank you.
I yes. Yes. And in fact, let's see, the last two storage unit projects that we've approved that are under construction, let's see, one had a house and some, I think, just storage on it. The other one, I think, was the same way. So I take it, is this one that you want like broken out as separate ordinance?
People have some wrinkled brows.
Okay.
You you've explained the data very, very well, and and I don't disagree with you with your you know, your your supposition. But I still have a bit of an issue with, you know, it's kind of a property rights thing. So you know, like the example I used last week, if 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 I had bought a piece of property and my intention was, you know, I need to have some passive income when I retire, and this is a good way to do that. We're kind of yanking the rug out from underneath some folks. And so what you're kind of saying is is it's taking it away from an individual's ability to do that to somebody who has to be able to, you know, go and work with somebody that's got one down there and buy them out and relocate. And, you know, it it just makes it really complicated. So I I still, it's still a philosophical thing, not so much what you said, it's just philosophical. Maybe there's nothing you could even say about that, so.
Yeah, I I would say that's the nature of zone when you do that, yes.
My, I guess my place is where we're doing the whole thing all at once. I I liked the one thing the resume with me last week was when you said we've got storage units, they're downtown right along Wall Avenue. There's one that's right along the the River Project that we worked on. It's I mean, that's their right, and that is what it is. But so I could see I could see us allowing making some of these restrictions in areas where our downtown is expanding and to making sure that along Wall Avenue, for example, that we maybe carve some of it, some of the M one and M two out and and leave the ability for some of these manufacturing uses to come in, but to do the whole thing all at once, then to me, it's out out there, that ground, I think, supports a lot of the other uses within the downtown, too. So I don't know. I think that's what that ground is for for me. So to me, it's kind of a compromise where we could support these manufacturing uses where where we really want them without doing the whole thing all at once.
Yeah, and I'm just gonna I I get what you're saying. I I just, I'm 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 going to argue with you just a little bit at this point.
Yeah, I can argue.
Because.
Turn on your mic, though. If you're gonna argue, turn on your mic.
Well, not argue, but but we're really not, we're really not downgrading the zone. We're just taking away a use from the zone. So if we were downgrading it to an R or something where they had to only build residential, I think it would be different for me. But I'm just trying to, we're only, we're taking away. I mean, we've done that before. I mean, diaper pickup or something. I can't remember what the weird thing was that we don't do any longer, but.
I I don't see this.
And I'm not arguing, I'm just trying to.
I don't see this as a taking per se. I just, it it would.
I mean, they still have the ability to put a a manufacturing something up on that that land.
Well, maybe more more valuable land. I don't know. You know, there's a lot, a lot of aspects to this, you know, I I totally get that.
Yeah, I just, I'm just.
And like I said, I mean, I could argue if if you want to take the other side, I could argue either side. I don't care.
Yeah.
Because I kind of get this.
Oh, I'm so sorry. I'm going to talk over you, but I was thinking like what you're kind of saying is a little bit of a compromise to have, you know, maybe not the whole thing at once. But specific areas like we have these seven different areas, and there's a reason why we have certain zoning at the B D O or certain zoning at the exchange area. You know, that might be a possibility. I love the trading element of this, you know, of of helping to incentivize people to, you know, do something different. That would be challenging if there's nowhere different in our city, they can do it.
I I think the other point, though, is also I don't know, maybe somebody could create a I I maybe the skill set needed to create a storage unit is different than creating a manufacturing and some of these other uses, right? So you have somebody who has the ability to create, turn their property into a storage unit for some income. And now we're saying you can't do that, but you could build some kind of manufacturing to support those, you know, four or five uses or or industries we're trying to to attract to the area. And they may be like, I don't know how to do that. But and so so where does that go? What? And where do the just normal market forces come into play? They'll say, you know, even though there's like, why are we prompting or trying to to do this or force something when shouldn't some of those natural market forces already do that for us? And, yeah.
Just so just to make sure I understand that. But someone still could do personal storage. They just have to adhere to the new guidelines, which means something on the main floor and then for the storage. I mean, it's a different look.
Yes.
But they still could, right? I I I will say, I mean, Brandon touched on it last week, and as I was reading through the packet based on our recommendation in our notes. Something that really struck me.
Gold star for you.
Yeah, something that really struck me was in the proposal, it it says the primary purpose. The primary purpose of the M one and M two zones is to provide economic development and employment. Um, for the community. Um, and then it talked about in doing so, they found the service does not provide these benefits and also created a negative impact on our community, and I. To me, that speaks volumes, number one, I think. We all know the 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 benefits of. Providing economic impact to our community and and also trying to make. A a community where. Other businesses don't negatively impact those around them, and I think, so to me, that that. To me, that, I as I as I go through this, I try to think. This does check both boxes, and so I'm I'm a lot more willing to move forward. I understand. Other issues, I just, to me. What we're trying to do accomplishes. Accomplishes the this, these purposes, and so I'm 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 supportive of that.
Ben, so you're talking about. Narrowly. Tell me, I I wasn't quite understanding what you were saying.
Yeah, I'm I'm, I understand the need for. These recommendations in some areas. Just the whole thing to me, all at once is a ton. Also, it's kind of a one size fits all. Approach, but. As I looked through it and especially included in your presentation last week, there's a lot of other land uses that are far worse and are less valued than these two. I mean, there were pictures of. Properties that are really not providing any. Real productive use whatsoever, and they're really widespread.
Mm hmm.
And so it feels like a. We're targeting a specific use that we don't want, and I understand the permanency issue, and. Once, once a use is built out, it's. It's almost a forever use, so I I understand that. But I feel like we ought to, every community ought to have. Some room for these kinds of uses or else, but to me, zoning and. Planning is all about choosing where those uses are and where they are not, right? And so to restrict them. In that Wall Avenue area where we feel like our downtown is expanding and we. Want to have a different type of use, to me, that's. A lot softer approach, if I'm the private landowner. To me, that's a, that just feels like a lot more sensible approach to. Al- allow for. Our changing and our growing as a community, but. Not change the game on the entire zone throughout the entire city.
I I think, you know, to kind of go off of one of your statements that, you know, zoning and land uses. Trying to decide where or where not things are. That's what we used to do when we had land. You know, and and maybe that's where I'm kind of getting. In a in a conflict, because, you know, we we are running out of land. And and so, so I can, I'm arguing the other side of the coin now, so it's a, yeah, I I I just think it, this is a, this is a delicate balance, we've got to figure it out. I like your your thoughts, though, let's take a more surgical approach than a machete. I don't know how that happens in two weeks, but uh. Or whatever it is, but.
It's gonna be hard, but. Like I said last week. Get ready for the general plan revision, because. It's gonna be messy and. You're right, like before we were built out, it would have been a whole lot easier, we were forecasting what uses we wanted and where, and now we're. We're built out, so we're always going to be changing the game for private landowners, that's gonna be a really hard. Change, yep.
Right.
Yep, so I think we want that one separated out.
Okay. Yeah.
To your first question.
Yeah, thanks for that, and the the next one we talked about.
And the the Ballerina, the Ballerina, that's just not helping your case, just so you know.
Yeah.
So you want us to eliminate the kids from this?
They should put a dude lift weights or something like that, just just stop trying to help you out.
Yeah. But again, uh, these athletic facilities are are currently permitted in these zones. Um, the reason why we're proposing. The Plan Commission recommended also to. No longer allow them is, uh, really, number one is they use space that other industrial businesses could use, and I. I talked with our economic development folks and. You know, once you got a tenant in there, you know, and other businesses are going to come in and say, hey, can you kick that tenant out and? You know, so that I can move in. Um, we did. Raise the potential conflicts, that's why my little ballerina, I'll have, this is a tougher guy next time. And really, these are better suited for commercial zones where there's better access, so. Uh, the proposal would eliminate them, except for those that are motor vehicle related, so if you had. Dirt, uh, indoor. Motocross or. Things that would make a lot of noise. Ah, I'm not sure what this one is. Sure. I know, I went to one down in Orem, it was a lot of fun, so. But this is another one that I I kind of sense, well, I sense very much that you wanted to vote on this separately, there were different opinions of whether this should be limited or not.
Did you have a comment?
I I mean, I just. Just doesn't seem like that somebody that's doing. I'm going to look at Ballerina, like even a boxing, you know, place, doesn't seem like it would take, that that that's not the kind of. They may be looking for a portion of the M one, that zone, but not to take up the whole space, it seems like. To me, manufacturing are thirty, forty. And higher thousand square foot buildings, right? Just doesn't seem like athletic facilities fit into that, but. They may be taking up a small portion, not. Maybe I'm wrong, I don't know.
Yeah, a lot of these are flex industrial buildings where you you separated them into tenant spaces and, you know, one might be a plumbing contractor that takes up. Ten thousand square feet, and the next one's a. A small machine shop that takes ten thousand square feet, and the next one might be a. An indoor gym that takes up ten thousand square feet or.
So. Couple comments. Can we separate the kids from the adult entertainment on this one?
Yeah.
This is where I was kind of thinking that this this might be a use that we create a new zone for, that that's kind of what I was thinking. Um, you know, so there. Yeah, we have a B zone, yeah. So. It just seems like there that there is a a legitimate need and 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 a use and commercial, just because of cost. Makes that a lot more prohibitive for for somebody that wants to provide that service. And if they do provide that service in a commercial zone, it's going to limit their patronage because they're going to have to charge more. I don't know, I, you know, I know, actually, I can't, I can't place any in Ogden that do that, and all the, just over the border in the West Haven, there's a. There's several over there on the other side of that inner west. But they're not ours anyway. Where where do we do it in Ogden? Is there somewhere that we're doing that here?
That's a good question, I mean, I can think of a couple that use big spaces, but you're right, maybe they're. I don't know what zone they're in.
Yeah.
Off the top of my head, you know.
I just got played.
I know we get requests, are you talking sports?
Hmm.
So. I think the Ballerina one's probably not the best example of what I had in mind.
Well, I was thinking, you know, they got volleyball, pickleball.
Yeah.
Soccer, inter-soccer, lots of different kinds of things like that.
Okay, so. It, the buildings out in this part of town are the ones that have the big spanning beams and structure, right? And that's the big wide open spaces that you need. Our kids have to travel to other cities to play in tournaments that have those kinds of facilities, mostly. There are some in Ogden that provide just indoor practice. Space, they rent it by the hour. One team comes in, the other team goes out, I mean, it's like a a machine. And it's not a huge build out to have that space, it's it's all about having that building. And if our kids don't have that in the winter, we are. Hosted as a community, because. A lot of other cities and communities are doing that year round. Because they have that facility or they have the weather that we don't have. So I think we need to have a place for these things to happen. I don't want to. Force them into the more expensive commercial zones where. They probably have to build a custom. Building out into a a more expensive area to have it. That I, to me, that the cost just goes right back to the kids, and it's already cost prohibitive for kids, some kids.
I wonder if we could, I mean, can you create, I mean, can you find out how many we already have? Because I like, I can think of some facilities, but I don't know what zone they're in at the top of my head, like in like a trampoline park or something, I don't know. What what zoning they're in, yeah.
Yeah, the trampoline park, or, yeah, it's kind of facility we're looking at.
We could do something just like we did downtown, where you can have one per. I don't know if there's blocks there or something, I mean, you could have it limited just based on something like that.
Or you were suggesting a whole new zoning.
Well, I was seeing as that that could be a potential, you know, they could, we could say, okay, here's a cluster of them, let's not. You know, let's go ahead and make that a, make that its own zone, if if that's what we find, I don't know where they're at.
That's, I think that's very interesting, because that that would actually be kind of fun, too. For families that are looking for these kinds of things and thorough concentrated.
Yeah.
Frankly, this is something that I wish that we provided. I mean. Pr- private businesses making a lot of money on it, because there's. These travel teams that can afford it, and they want to have their own. Special space for their own use, and there's only, and they they just pay that rate. But for most of our kids, they they can't pay that rate, it's it's a lot. So if we had our own facility like this, I'd feel a lot more comfortable.
But can you just? I I guess what I have in my mind is now, I don't think it's the same thing that you're explaining, so tell me what your vision is or what you're, what you've seen in other communities. What where what people go to use these for.
Just think of a. Huge building with big spanning beams. It's all turf on the inside. Depending on the sport that it caters to, you could have. Well, most sports, you have nets hanging in between, so you could accommodate. Multiple drills within the same space, a lot like the fieldhouse that we're going to build at the Marshall White, actually.
So.
Or the, yeah, fairgrounds, something in the fairgrounds.
Yeah.
Yeah, 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 or the Weaver State Indoor Practice Facility.
Okay, so so a training facility.
Yeah, training.
Okay, yeah, but that's what I was thinking, I envisioned the training facility, but then, for some reason, I'm thinking like volleyball tournaments and pick, I'm like, whoa, whoa.
Yeah, those are, those are massive.
Yeah, I mean, we wouldn't, yeah, we wouldn't do that anyway, but, okay.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
I'd be okay if that use was happening in Ogden, because our kids wouldn't have to travel, but, yeah.
I think there are, I think there are some where they where they would be able to do tournaments. Also.
Well, definitely, like the fairgrounds, right now we have that space.
You you're thinking tournaments, having a hard time seeing that because the the space is too big for that? Space would need to be too big?
I think this is. Veering off, but yeah, I I think, I mean, in my mind, sure, I unders, I I totally agree, I think in other communities, someone has purchased. Let's just say a warehouse and turned it into a a training facility where they. You can do soccer training one night a week, you can have. A pitching machine and people are learning to bat and field, and you could do baseball, softball one night a week, you can do. Field hockey one night, like I I I totally understand that. Um, but yeah, but in my mind, I'm not, I'm not visioning like even even hosting. Soccer or even footsaw where, which is much smaller fields or.
Oh, yeah, they have.
Even pickleball, I don't even think that.
Yeah, they have those.
Built for pickleball, like I, in my mind, this is more training, this is more like a, like, yeah, like the fieldhouse aspect where we 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 have. Nets and provide opportunities for kids to go and get this year round training, that that that's what I was envisioning, I just, it sounded like we were going a different direction.
Yeah, we'll provide some analysis on that.
It, when you said flex space, that makes a lot more sense to me, I can see, I mean, I. Yeah, I, there's a lot of warehouse type. Uh, by the transfer station, and I think there's a, I actually think there's a dance studio in there.
There's gymnastics and some, but I, I don't know what's on there and.
That makes sense versus the other.
Okay. Uh, part of the presentation I didn't get to last time, and I will get to it quickly, but uh, we also propose some changes in development standards in the. Uh, manufacturing zones and. Uh, so some of a, we have this, uh, an impervious cur- impervious coverage standard right now. That, uh, it's in M two, it's, you can only cover eighty percent of your lot with impervious surfaces and then M two, it's ninety percent. Now, some of that is just your basic landscape and long dirt edges and then the parking lot, and that works, but if somebody doesn't meet that standard, they end up. Just having this kind of vacant space interior lot. The thing that, the reason for that traditionally has been for storm drainage, because we want some. Area for the uh, storm drain to percolate into the ground. Today, our standards have gotten much more specific, and there's, the technology's gone up too, there's more people can detain. Water, for example, uh, put facilities under their parking lot and detain the water there, and so there really isn't a. Purpose anymore for this impervious coverage standard, and it's just. Land that. These industrial users can't use, so we're actually proposing to eliminate that standard. Um, there's a rear yard setback required in the M one zone, which. We don't really see a purpose for unless you're next to a residential zone. And it's sometimes hard to administer, like, this is an M one lot. So this is the front, so this is the back, so this is a twenty foot setback required, the sides are zero. But by the time you get back there, it's kind of arbitrary, so it's just really a place where people store junk and stuff, so. We're actually proposing limiting that standard. Yes.
I'm sorry, um, I'm the impervious.
Yes.
Stuff. So we we've got these, I think we still have a regional detention. Master plan or plan or, I get, I don't know what they call it. Um, that, uh, you know, we have these, uh, detention ponds, retention ponds scattered around. Um, how is this going to affect the way we use those?
Uh, so currently, if you do a project, you've got to. Detain or retain on your own site. And so the, uh, anything regional is. In addition to any onsite. Detentions, real, those are to affect, um, existing problems mostly or or. For shortcomings, so. Current standards, if you develop a site, you have to retain or detain your storm drain onsite. And this would just really give you a more flexibility on how you do that.
Okay, I I do want to talk about this offline a little bit.
Okay.
It's not directly related to this, so.
Okay.
Doesn't doesn't really matter here.
I had no idea that existed, so.
Uh, in the M two, there's actually no maximum height, so you want to build a.
Really?
Yeah, which. Kind of surprised us too, the user structures came in at a hundred and twenty feet, and we thought, hmm, I guess we have no height, so. Uh, we're proposing to put a ninety foot maximum height, which is. Really tall and would accommodate virtually. All industrial development, except for something really obnoxious, and. We think if that came in that we wanted it, we should deal with the code amendment. The buffer standards, I mentioned the, we have the, uh. Sort of setbacks, but we don't really define what that is, and when you're next to a residential zone, a building setback. That space just ends up being where they store their junk cars or extra materials or stuff like that, so. Uh, we do, we're proposing some specific actual buffer standards that that area. Should be fenced, should have trees, should have no openings, just when it's adjacent to residential. Uh, we also looked at building durability. Just. Are we creating buildings that create lasting value? That can be used for, you know, many years. And things like these contra- concrete tilt up buildings. Nobody really knows how long they last, because, uh. They they're fairly recent invention, and all the ones that have originally built are still holding up pretty well, so.
First good earthquake, that's when you'll find out.
Yeah. Versus, we know the metal buildings, they just have a a life. Uh, a limited life. Uh, but what we looked at is just this little concrete base makes a huge difference, these are some that are on BDO that are really. Holding up quite well, and it's just the fact that. That truck backs in, it's going to hit concrete, it's not going to hit the metal. Versus a metal building, it's going to hit the metal, all the snow is going to be there, the weed whackers, the. You're going to throw rocks and everything, so it's really that base that's the key to durability, so. Uh, many industrial buildings. Are built and built with the. Sort of a block or concrete base, so. uh, we're proposing that that be required for new industrial buildings, just as a durability standard. Um, also looking at just the aesthetics and attractiveness and thinking about attractiveness, not just in how good it looks, but attractiveness and can we attract business there? And you know, if you're a business and you're wanting to come to Ogden, you want to open up shop, you want to have high paid employees. Um, are you going to go to someplace that looks like a kind of a junky trashy area? And I, again, talking with our economic development folks who are showing Ogden out every day. You know, when they go to like BDO, they just think, wow, this is really nice. And other areas, it's like, hmm, you know, is that business gonna want to come in there? So things like landscaping, uh, landscaping covers a lot of sins. You know, just this little front yard landscaping makes a big difference. Building architecture, you know, just looks like a, like this versus this, you know, what kind of businesses are gonna come there? So so what we proposed was to set a bar for these things and set it fairly low. We didn't wanna, you know, this isn't Washington Boulevard or historic twenty fifth street. We, we're not trying to make it look like really fantastic, but set just a little low bar that most people can get over. And to make it look a little bit better and a little bit more attractive. So we came up with a list of eleven things and said, hey, pick three. So a lot of options that uh, the developers could do. Maybe things like, hey, provide two different materials. Do this little covered entry. This little covered entry feature really makes that building, you know, do a little brick on it. That would be three things. And we'd say that that would pass, even though this is a metal building. Uh, little decorative shapes in your brick, a little overhang, split face box, you know, this would meet the standards we're proposing. Things like putting your roll up doors on the side of it. Again, this little entry feature is nice. You've got this little stone wainscoting. We'd say, hey, send that along the whole building again. So the cars aren't bumping into it, but also for aesthetics. Um, this is another one where you just got two materials. You got a little entry feature. You got some brick. We'd say, yes, that would work. Here's a different style building. A little thing, there's just no parking in front. All the parking is on the side. There's no roll up doors in the front. There's lots of windows and glass. We'd say yes on that. Here's probably the most plain Jane building you'll get. But again, it's got two materials. There's no parking in front. There's no roll up doors. There's a couple of materials. We'd say that would meet it. So again, we tried to set a low bar that most could meet and wouldn't be real expensive, but just make it a little bit more attractive. So the planning commission is recommending those standards.
Any questions or concerns about those?
I'm sorry to keep chiming in, but on, on the, on the landscaping requirement. I, I think our current standard is you just gotta have ten percent landscaping on some of those things. And it doesn't matter how you get it, just get ten percent and you're good, right?
Uh, you are required to have the front yard landscape. So it does have to be along the front. Yeah.
But I, but I think, you know, you can even have less landscaping than that if it's, if it's done creatively and you know, certainly would cause more curbing and more different kinds of things. But uh, but to your point that, you know, we've got to make it interesting and, and beautiful instead of just I'm a little hesitant to say on the, on the building architecture thing. Just pick two of these things because we've done that with uh, PRUDs, you know, you can increase your, your density. If you pick two things, well, they're picking two things that don't make any difference. And they're gonna find out what that is. And so I think we've got to have a better standard than just pick two items out of this list. That, that doesn't seem to work long term to me.
Okay.
Just from past experience with other things that we've done similar kinds of incentives.
Other ones in particular that you think are higher priority?
Well, I didn't look that close. I, you know, but uh, you know, and I could, I'll, I'll, I'll pay more attention to that. But uh, anyway, you understand what I'm saying.
Yeah.
Okay.
I know we're running out of time to just uh, the last thing with non complying structures, you know, we have lots of areas that are, that look like this, where it's just, you know, asphalt jungle or it's a lot. And what we're proposing is if you were to like do a twenty thousand square foot addition to this, you ought to bring some of this up. You maybe do a little more landscaping or things like that. If you're, you're doing a small addition, do a small amount. If you're doing a big one, do a big amount, but just to bring it up over time to just make these areas so they aren't just uh, storage lots facing the street. So.
Uh, but one, one other thing about the landscaping thing that occurred to me that, you know, we are trying to encourage people to use water wise landscaping. And so it needs to have some standard to, to meet that water wise. Uh, standard.
Yeah. Yeah. We have a lot of language on that. So.
And I love the trees there too, because it provides a little shade. So you have just all this open space. Yeah. Cooling when you're in the middle of all that concrete.
Yeah. Barton, what are other neighboring communities doing for standard wise in these zones?
Uh, I don't know. I'm kind of battling resisting this urge and made it feels like that's what these zones are for. So not that I don't care what these areas look like. I'm not saying no standard, but that's why we have these zones is so that we can have these uses and have these impacts and put them in a place that doesn't impact the rest of the city. So that's just what, what I'm thinking about.
Yeah.
So then if we put too much standard on, then we're putting in burdensome standards that then just make it more expensive to have those uses in our own city. So I'm just wondering where that balance lies to.
Yeah.
I, I would suggest you drive down twenty six hundred north, uh, between, you know, Washington and the freeway, rural on White Drive, you know, the Weaver National Park. You know, they, they've actually put some of these kind of standards in place. They're not exactly these, but um, but there's landscaping, there's some of that kind of stuff. And, and it, and it does add to the, I think it makes it more attractive to uh, the, the tenant, you know, or to the the, the use that, that happens there. So.
Well, thanks so much, Barton. I don't know, Janine, where you're gonna say the next step.
I just wanted to touch base with Glenn and make sure he, he has enough information, direction.
I think so. We've got a, a meeting tomorrow. I think we can go through and come up with a, a strategy.
Yeah.
Thank you. Thanks so much. Any other business, Janine?
Uh, just a reminder of the legislative breakfast Thursday morning at seven AM. Be here or be square. So yeah, we've got four or five legislators that'll be here. We have representatives from the league that'll be here. Um, our city's lobbyists will be here. Some of the directors will be here. So should be a fun time here, here.
Great. Thank you. And I'll, I'll follow up with a question later. All right. We've got a couple of minutes to get in there. Thank you.